Everyone, we are now live on Facebook.
How are you? Oh, super duper. Hi. All right, great, thank you.
I was leaving after the presentation.
You're staying?
I can get a ride.
Good evening.
Oh, 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 I know what this is. Right. That's fine. You always end up being the last.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Reynoldsburg City Council chambers. I'd like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council meeting of March 28, 2022 to order. The time is now 6:31. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins, and please welcome to our City Council chambers. At this time, we will stand for the invocation that is given by Pastor Aaron D. Long of Simple Church. Following the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that we're coming out of this cold weather and that we are coming into a new season where things are going to start to grow and more sunny days ahead of us, Lord. Just thanks for your blessings upon us tonight. We ask you, God, to be with us for each one of these council members, for our mayor, for all of our civil servants here, Lord. We just thank you for them because I know that they are living lives that are surrendered. I know that they're dealing with the weight of this community on their shoulders, and so, Lord, I pray a special blessing on them tonight. I pray that you bless them with the strength for this meeting, the strength to carry their lives, the strength to carry the decisions that need to be made. Lord, I pray that you give them the wisdom that they need, Lord, to make decisions that, Lord, are going to impact not only this city today but for generations to come. Be with us tonight. Let your Spirit be among us, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and the visible for all. Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Bryant?
Here.
Councilmember Strickland?
Present.
Councilmember Savadi?
Here.
Councilmember Packerell?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Here.
And Councilmember Cottner?
Here.
At this time, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Say none. The agenda is approved as submitted. Next, we have the approval of minutes. The March 14, 2022 minutes are not ready for approval at this time. Next, we have community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may wish to bring matters to the attention of City Council or discuss items on the agenda for the exception of legislation scheduled for a public hearing. Comments related to a public hearing may only be made during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The council president will invite speakers to step to the microphone, give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. City Council would like to welcome the spectacular, awesome state championship Lady Raiders. Would the team please step forward to the podium? Yes, oh, everyone. We have a resolution to recognize that we would like to read and present to the team. Councilmember Strickland, please read the resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. It is great, with great honor, that I read this resolution for the team here in Reynoldsburg. You all did a fantastic job, and thank you, coaches, also, for just putting your time in and teaching these young ladies how to continue to just win, and when they're down, they continue to fight. So, thank you so much. I will go ahead and read the resolution here. Of appreciation of Reynoldsburg Lady Raiders Girls Basketball Team, whereas the achievement of the Reynoldsburg Ladies Raiders Girls Basketball Team highlights the commitment, spirit, and pride of Reynoldsburg community and should be recognized, and whereas the Lady Raider Team is made up of seniors Makaya Miller, Maya Perry, Trinity Remothe, Jamona Ross, Emira Russell, juniors Tyron Cornet and Samara Savoy, sophomores Simone Holyfield and freshman Samad Johnson, Aubrey Price, Jayla Rawls, and Jayla Wheatley, who won the first ever Division One Girls Basketball State Championship. And whereas this team won the title by seven points, with team members receiving OCC All-Conference Honors and OCC Player of the Year, and whereas the Lady Raiders had an extremely competitive season and played at the highest level, ending with 27-2 record, and whereas these ladies showed commitment and dedication to their sport and each other, and whereas the success of the Reynoldsburg High School Lady Raider Girls Basketball Team is a tremendous accomplishment in providing Reynoldsburg High School and the community with an enormous sense of pride, and whereas head coach Jack Patel, OCC Coach of the Year, and assistant coaches Clint Moore, Mitchell Enring, David Butcher, and Courtney Patel are to be credited for their hard work and dedication in producing not only a championship team, but young women who excel in the classroom and in the community. And whereas it is important for the Reynoldsburg City Council to recognize this team's achievement and express our pride in the young women that you are. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg that City Council and staff do hereby acknowledge and applaud the Reynoldsburg Lady Raiders Girls Basketball Team on their success in earning their state championship honor, past this 20th day of March 2022. Can we give them a hand, please? Also, if anyone else would like to make any comments to the lady Raiders.
Where is Ms. Russell? I was very excited to tell my family you were going to Morgantown, and as soon as I had sent them a text showing about you, Coach Carey retired, so I'm a little disappointed, but I will say this, as a mother of somebody who did play Division One sports, recruitment is no joke. And don't let anybody else make a decision for you. I advise the football team on recruiting a lot, and I always tell them, there's two questions to ask yourself when you make your decision. Number one is, if the coaching staff leaves you tomorrow, will you still want to be there? And number two, if you can't play tomorrow, will you still want to be there? So, I know there's some other folks here that are going too, but find a home that will be your home.
Do we have any other comments? Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Lady Raiders, and I'm sure you're beaming with pride, with Raider pride, just as the entire community is. I had the opportunity to travel to Dayton to see you guys compete in the semifinals, and I knew the finals would be epic with you playing against Mason, and you did not disappoint. I liken your fierce competition, ladylike grit, basketball IQ, and athleticism as a Herculean effort, well, more like a David and Goliath effort. You did not allow the score or the presence of Ms. Kayla, Kyla Oldaker, the 6'6" presence to deter you. You played Raider basketball and stuck to your script. Parents, if there's any parents here, I invite you to stand. I know what it's like being a sports mom and an arts mom. I know the money, the time, the constant pouring of encouragement and life lessons into these young women, and it does not go unnoticed. They are our leaders today and tomorrow. Thank you, parents, for cultivating their passion and their talent and allowing us in the community to cheer right alongside with you. And thank you, Lady Raiders, for signing my program. I'm going to keep this forever. Ms. Russell, or should I say Ms. Basketball? To you and your teammates, Ms. Perry, Ms. Price, Ms. Savoy, Ms. Watley, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Ross, Ms. Ross, Ms. Ramos, Ramos, and Ms. Miller, thank you. Thank you for introducing Raider Nation and the City of Reynoldsburg to those nonbelievers. In the words of our cheerleaders, "We are Raiders. We are number one." Thank you.
At this time, I would like to have a motion to...
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just letting everybody else go because I just want to say congratulations. I've been following y'all all season long, and I said it here at council after the first round of the playoffs, when I looked at the tournament, I looked at the brackets, I said that there was a really good chance, I didn't want to jinx it, that y'all was going to win it all, and y'all sure did. Y'all showed everybody what you could do, especially against, what is her name, the six, whatever her name was.
Ms. Oldaker.
Y'all showed her what Reynoldsburg was about, because everybody was like, oh, y'all was going to lose, oh, she's 6'6". Well, tell you what, when I saw y'all was going into overtime, I was like, whoop, they lost, because I saw it, they got sluggish, they got slow. That shows you what conditioning is all about, and y'all had condition way better than they did. So, once again, congratulations, and my average when I played high school basketball was two points, so, just want to put that out there. Yeah. I hardly got off the bench, so...
Yes, Councilmember?
Congratulations to all of you. Coach, congratulations, some great runs through the years, and congratulations on bringing this one back home, so a great job by all of you. Coach, or any captains, you all have anything that you want to share at this opportunity? I mean, I can't believe Coach Patel would want to be quiet with talking about some of these young ladies.
May I have a motion to approve a resolution of appreciation for the Reynoldsburg Lady Raiders Girls Basketball Team?
To move...
Councilmember Baker, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bryant? Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we're going to pass out all of the copies of the resolution to the team and to the coach, and if we could, we'd like to take some more photos. And if anyone else wants to be a part of the photos, you can come down to the front. You want a picture? Come on.
Ah, yeah, you're all kind of like all over the place. Lou, come on, Lou, come over to the side. Scooch back in. Go, scooch, scooch. Yep, go back some because... We got you all, we got you. All right, you guys ready?
Do we have any other comments from the community? Yes, Madam President. Ms. Packerell? If you'll step to the mic and speak into the microphone, please.
Namaste, everyone. My name is Adidi Packerell, and I live at 8386 Ashland Place, Reynoldsburg, Ohio. I am currently in eighth grade at Baldwin Road Junior High, and I'm here to fulfill my requirement for my citizenship in the Community Merit Badge for Boy Scouts. Since it is also Women's History Month, I would like to share a little bit about a woman that inspires me. As the first female Secretary of State, Madeleine Albright helped change the world and change what it means to be Secretary of State. She was the daughter of Czech diplomat Joseph Korbel, and in 1939, Madeleine Albright fled to England with her family after the Nazis occupied Czechoslovakia. Madeleine Albright long believed that they had fled for political reasons, but she learned later on in life that her family was Jewish and three of her grandparents had died in Nazi concentration camps. Her family immigrated to the United States in 1948. She had an MA and a PhD from Columbia University when she went to work in Washington. She started by working under Maine Senator Edmund S. Muskie and served on the National Security Council in the administration of President Jimmy Carter. During the presidencies of Ronald Reagan and George H.W. Bush, Madeleine Albright worked for several nonprofit organizations and taught at Georgetown's University School of Foreign Services. When Bill Clinton became president, she found herself in Washington's most powerful circle, and Clinton appointed her to be Ambassador to the United Nations. Later on, in 1996, Clinton nominated Madeleine Albright to succeed Warren Christopher as U.S. Secretary of State. After her nomination was confirmed by the Senate, she was sworn in on January 23, 1997. She became the first female Secretary of State. She pursued an active foreign policy, including the use of military force to pressure, I'm sorry about the pronunciation, archeatic regimes in Yugoslavia and Iran, among other troubled regions. Her trip to North Korea in October of 2000 to meet leader King Jong-un II made her the highest-ranking U.S. official to visit the country at the time. She drew some criticism for her tough positions on U.S. sanctions against Iraq, which led to many civilian deaths in that country. Just last week, on March 23, she died at the age of 84. She helped change the world one foreign policy at a time. There are lots of women that inspire me, from Taylor Swift to Michelle Obama, but I see myself looking up to Madeleine Albright the most. I look up to Madeleine Albright because her story looks a lot like mine. She had to flee her home because of political prosecution from the government, and even though I only found out about Madeleine Albright a few weeks ago, she has inspired me in a lot of ways. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam President, just one quick for the new lady. Read her book, Call Me Madam, it's really good. I know you like reading, so you'll enjoy that book.
Thank you. Madam President, there are no further in-house or email comments. Do we have any comments from council? Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany?
Yes, Madam President, just a few things I want to kind of update you in the community as we move forward. Bill Dorment and I, our service director, had a conversation with the U.S. Geological Survey recently, and we are in the process of acquiring a sensor that will actually be placed on a bridge, potentially the bridge right at Main Street just out here, that will actually monitor water level, and the hope is that if water levels get to a certain extent, they will actually send out a text message, a text blast, to residents that might be impacted by excessive water. So, we'll give them at least an early warning system if they need to move anything from their basement, if there's something in their driveway, things of that nature. I should have some information on that, too, soon. It actually worked really well. We may be getting a discounted price for it, so instead of paying full price for the project, it looks like we found some additional funding that we don't have to pay for. That kind of goes along with our public input period for flood mitigation grant through the Ohio Emergency Management Association. As you know, we had a couple of announcements on that for residents in Reynoldsburg, regardless of location, to send information to us about their experiences with the flooding over the decades. And thankfully, when we got our first kind of preview of everything, we actually were told that this particular request for public information had the most submissions of any Ohio Emergency Management Action Grant, which is good, but it's good that people got the information out there, so that only benefits us when we're looking for some actual solutions to these problems. we're looking for some actual solutions to these problems, because it covers a wide range of area, not only those along Black Lake Creek, but also areas that you wouldn't expect to have significant issues with flooding. As the process moves forward, I'll keep council updated on that information. But again, they were pleasantly surprised with the amount of response that we've had from that. Also want to let you know a couple of items that you'll be seeing in the not-too-distant future, our street program for 2022, as well as the Phase Two of Main Street. We did get our Phase Two Main Street information released to us last week, and as you can imagine, with the price of materials and costs, things are a little bit more expensive than what we originally anticipated. But we'll bring that information to you. But obviously, when the price of gasoline goes up or the oil goes up, it impacts how our roads program will be. We will have our actual street program. The bids will be open on April 8th, and hopefully, I would assume that we would probably have both of those informations on the April 25th agenda for our street program this year. As you know what we do with our street agenda, our street program, is we will take our current budget that we have allocated, and then we will play a little bit of puzzle-making to make sure that we can impact the most amount of roads throughout our community while at the same time staying within that perfect budget range. So the Auditor's Office and the Street -- and the Service Department have worked really well together to kind of anticipate some potential things that are coming up, so we'll have that on there. But just want to let you know, especially for those people who are watching at home, while it was snowing a little bit today, the asphalt factories are going to be kicking on relatively soon, and we can start paving some streets. Main Street at Lancaster in Maine, however, is not going to be one of those at the current time. Obviously, we're working with AEP to get those power lines buried. That's the next step. But you should also be seeing some additional work on some retaining walls, some curb work, some sidewalk work, and things of that nature, as well as getting ready to move into the second phase of everything, which is from Jackson all the way to Wagner, as this project that started many years ago. We're getting into, not the final stage, but we're getting closer to those final stages. Thank you.
Thank you for the updates. Does anyone else have any comments? At this time, we have a presentation given by Silken Gold for the East Main Street and
Thank you, council. My name is Eric Alizondo. I'm the SVP of Operations with Silken Gold. Thanks for having us tonight and letting us speak and give you an update on 8555 Main Street. It's the Shepherd's Park. Yes, can you hear me now?
Can you talk up a little bit?
Yeah, can you hear me now? And I'm just, I'm a little too tall, so I'm going to lean over a little bit. So probably you all, you can recall that we were here in November to get final approval from City Council on the rezoning and that Planning Commission had supported the rezoning for this project. So we wanted to give you an update. We did pull our application back in December, and since then, we have hired an individual who I have with me now. Her name's Rosetta Brown. And we have been working to identify issues with the tenants that they have. We still have, do have a contract on this property and still do plan to move forward. But given what, you know, the opinions of the residents back in November, we have given you some information for you to, you know, go through and also kind of see the status of where they are in terms of moving, also moving their trailers, et cetera. So we're here to just let you know what's going on and answer any questions. And I'd like Rosetta to at least let you know kind of what she's been doing for the last couple of months.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosetta Brown. My company is R.H. Brown &amp; Company, where I am the President and CEO. And I was actually hired by Silken Gold to come in to do the relocation assessments of each and every person, household, at the property. I will say that we've had much success. We actually met with at least 25 of the residents to date. We met most of them at the Reynoldsburg Library in a meeting room. We did the one-on-one assessments just to understand what their needs and preferences were, and then talked to them. Some of them had actually already sold their units, but they were still coming over to meet with us as well. So we got a chance to talk to them again, to find out what their needs and preferences were and how they like to move forward in terms of their mobile home units. So again, we've had good success with the turnout, have talked to a lot of households just to find out what's going on with their household. And most of them have actually sold their actual mobile home units and have moved, for the most part, or will be moving as well. We started back the end of February talking to them.
Many people have you not made contact with yet?
I have five left.
Okay.
I have five left to talk to.
Go ahead.
So thank you for coming back and giving us an update on what's going on with the trailer home. So thank you. I do have a question for you. When are you guys expecting to have everyone completely out? Do you have a set date that you're working towards?
So I don't have a set date. Good question. I'm actually working with each household. As I said, most of them have sold their units, and we are looking at the companies who purchase those units to come and pick them up and move them off the property. So we don't have an actual set date, but we're getting close.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. We got this listing of names and things tonight. Was that from you or from?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize. I heard your name is Brown.
Rosetta Brown.
What's the name of the company?
R.H. Brown &amp; Company.
R.H. Brown Company? Okay. And so your company then focuses on helping to relocate?
Yes. So we do relocation. Primarily, I do it with public housing authorities. We're working with Columbus, and we've done a lot of relocation across the U.S.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
Going over your spreadsheet that you submitted, I've seen there's several tenants on here saying like this one needs assistance with housing and down payment. Are you helping those residents with the down payment, whether they're moving into another house, another mobile home, or renting an apartment with, you know, with security deposit and stuff like that?
So we've been able to give some of the residents who have that need some leads, some housing leads, and I'll be meeting back with Silken Gold to talk to them about each individual household and what their needs are.
Councilwoman Lawson-Ro.
Thank you. In terms of the support that each household is receiving, is it, is the support coming from your company, or is it coming from Silken Company?
So I'm actually doing the initial assessments. And again, we will be meeting back with Silken Gold to understand what each household is saying that they may have a need of. Some of them have already moved on, and they are just in the process of getting their actual mobile home moved out and off the park. So I will be going back to Silken Gold to discuss with them what each individual household said their needs are.
And how are those needs assessed? Is there paperwork involved that our residents have to perform to submit in order to receive any sort of support monetarily, moving expenses, down payment, and such? How does that work, please?
So again, we're just doing the assessments, doing the actual interviews, just to listen and document what they're saying that their needs are. And once we take it back to Silken Gold, we'll be able to come back to each one of the households to determine what, if anything, will be done at that point. And I'll let Eric speak to it.
Thank you.
So just real quick. So you talk about the assessment, but so that means whoever applies or whatever, they're not guaranteed to get any kind of assistance, is what I'm kind of reading this at, because there's some people on this list is asking for assistance for a deposit on a rental unit and stuff like that, but it's not necessarily granted that they're going to get any kind of assistance.
Yes, that's, we have not made that determination yet. So right now, once we have all the information, we're waiting to hear from five additional tenants. And in the meantime, we have provided, there's been requests for moving materials and tape, and so we have also given, you know, we delivered that. You delivered that what? Last, yeah, two weeks ago. So we have already provided some financial assistance. And once we have all of the information that we have, I'll be back, I'll at least send a report to this, to the City Council and to the Development Director, let you guys know and answer some of your questions. Councilman Baker. I think Lawson-Ro, you had the same question, so we'll let you know.
Are there any other questions?
I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask the question, but I do want to put on the record. I understand that some time ago that there was a letter that was sent to the residents indicating that there was 120 days before they needed to vacate the property. Is that correct? Do you know? Is that correct?
Yes, so Rosetta, they do have, right now, they did receive a letter that they would have by the end of May to be, you know, to leave the property. So that is the current timeline that they have. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so Rosetta was, yeah, but that is, that's the current timeline right now. Not to say that that cannot be moved, but right now, that is, those letters went out in December.
Councilwoman Cotner has a question. Are you finished?
I did have one more question. Thank you. Excuse me. So that letter, I'm assuming, had come from the owner of the property?
That's correct.
And is the owner of the property supporting the residents in any kind of way to help facilitate the moves beyond what you and Ms. Brown's company?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Silken Gold has decided that we, and, you know, it's part of our mission, it's part of what, who we are as a company, that we want to make sure that things are done correctly. And so that's why we hired Rosetta, and we needed to find out from, specifically from the residents, their needs and what their situation was.
Yes, Councilmember Cotner.
Thank you. Excuse me. So was this presentation you had tonight just to talk about residents? Or I see you brought it boarded up, or what was the purpose of this?
Yeah, the purpose of this is to allow, you know, this council to understand that we still are actively, you know, working on this project and that we're assisting the residents and, you know, trying to understand the situation. Because back in November, it was very contentious, and I wanted to give you an update of where we are right now.
Okay. Thank you. And I think people, that was our first priority, making sure that people were cared for, those residents who've been there for so long. So thank you for making those efforts and coming to share that. You know, we never even got into the real point of that meeting, though, of talking about the zoning, because that's still an issue that, you know, at some point, that's why I said I'm making sure what the purpose and point tonight was, because that's still, at some point, where we would go with this. And I guess my question would be to Attorney Shook, because they withdrew that application, there's no ticking clock at this point, so to speak, if, or does that still, the Planning Commission's opinion, has the clock ticking in terms of our timeframe, or where are we with process and procedure then, if that makes sense how I'm phrasing that?
It does, it does. Thank you, Councilmember Cotner. Because the applicant pulled their application before it was voted on, they will need to restart the process, which means they would have to submit a new application for rezoning and would go to City Council first, then to Planning Commission for a recommendation, then back to City Council.
So they are essentially at square one, really, then, of the rezoning and development process of it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
This is a fairly sizable piece of property, and I'm familiar with the number of your locations and the size of the property and the number of those locations. What, if anything, do you see going on to this property aside from Sheetz's location?
Well, the front, so the front section of, when Planning Commission approved this, we were approved for a community commercial, so that would be uses within that zoning district. The rest of the back section of the property, we left as innovation. So right now, the real push for us is we have a tenant, that's Sheetz, that is very interested, and we do have a lease with them to have this corner. So that's really the first step in this, is to get that approved and then move forward with the rest of the potential development. We do not have any current plans or any tenants for the other sections of property.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So this is a statement for Ms. Brown. So now that we know, we're working towards the end of May, right? I am concerned when it comes to just with the shortage of housing apartments, how that's going to work, because I heard him state that, you know, that date can be pushed back some, because as we know, it's a shortage. And it looks as though by the list, there's still quite a few people that's looking for housing. So what's going to be your plan, I guess, to make sure that everyone is going to have a place to actually live?
Thank you for the question. So we have already been working with each household to date through the meetings that we've had with them, and just to help them understand. They've given me locations, for example, Pataskla or Grove City, areas to look where they would want to live. And it's just a handful right now. The other ones have sold. They are actually moving with their trailer in some cases, and others are moving off-site, and they have done so already. So the ones that are looking for apartments, we are again giving them housing leads so that they can make the decision based upon those leads that we give them. Thank you.
Councilman.
So part of the question is already answered, but there are, you say, five families with whom you have not made a contract, right?
Correct.
What are you doing to make sure that they will be given the equal opportunities to these, whatever services you are providing?
So we have attempted to call, and we've also sent letters to those five families, so we're waiting on them to respond now. We've been talking to the neighbors just to see if they are in fact still there, and we know that one of them is not, so we'll still reach out to them.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation by the Reynoldsburg Visitors Bureau, Mr. Les Samaji and Mr. David Riddell. Please come to the podium. Oh, we're just going to have Mr. Les Samaji. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the backup.
Good evening. I'm so humbled to be here after the Reynoldsburg basketball team. It is such an incredible accomplishment for Reynoldsburg. I wish, as all of you know, that I'm the tennis coach in Reynoldsburg, and I am just hopeful that I can follow Coach Portell's footsteps, the way he did it and the way he led his team to become an incredible feat for Reynoldsburg. I'm just humbled, and hopefully, hopefully, I can do the same thing in the next few seasons. But it's a tough act to follow. But it's a tough act to follow, for sure. First, I'd like to recognize some of the board members who are here tonight for the Visitors Bureau, our president, Dave Riddell, board member Susan Brusque, and Councilman Salvati, council president Angie Jenkins, and of course, our mayor, Mayor Baggini. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight, and I'm going to keep this short and to the point, and pointing out what we're all about, what we're all about, and what is going on in our industry. First of all, I'm sure you all know that our, we get our funding from the bet tax. The bet tax submitted by our three hotels in Reynoldsburg. The total bet tax collected in 2021, which, you know, just, just, just the past year, was $331,400 and some few cents, of which the Visitor, Visitors Bureau received $75,000. That is about 23% of the bet tax. After we receive our annual allotment, the rest of the bet tax goes into the city's general fund. For comparison's sake, Dublin, which is the largest city, largest suburb in central Ohio, has 19 hotels, and their Visitors Bureau receives about 35% of the bet tax. Approximately the same in Grove City, which is our second largest city, largest suburb, with also 19 hotels, and about the same Visitors Bureau income. In contrast, Experience Columbus, with 239 hotels and almost a $50 million budget, attracting more than 43 million visitors, and, and these visitors are responsible for spending $7.6 billion annually in our area. Columbus bet tax collection is benefiting the Affordable Housing Tax Trust, more than 30 human services projects, Experience Columbus, which is the, their Visitors Bureau, and the Sports Commission, and the Arts Council. And for your information, the benefit from visitors spending in Columbus, 30% of the, of that $7.6 billion annually in our incomes, 30% goes into retail, 20% goes into food and beverages, 18% goes into transportation, 15% goes into entertainment, and 13% goes into lodging. In our case, most of the hotel bet tax comes in March, in, in, in the Reynoldsburg area. Most of the hotel bet tax comes in March through August. That's when the largest amount of money we get into our budget, for obvious reasons, and that is when most of the traveling takes place, here and most everywhere else. The good news for Reynoldsburg is that during these busy months, hotel occupancy was nearly at its peak. The rest of the month's occupancy was much less, but fairly consistent with state and national trends. Our Visitors Bureau budget remains the same as it has been for decades. Our income consists of 80% from bet tax, 16% from our magazine advertising revenue, and our expenditures consist of 43%, 43% payroll, 35% advertising and promotions, 13% in partnering with local organizations, and 9% just administration. Now, here are some industry, travel industry trends. The latest wave of research, and this research, this marketing research company is located here in Columbus, it's called Longwood, Longwood International. It's a major research company that keeps trend of, of what's going on in, in the travel industry. As of mid-March, fairly late, and, and this, this provides feedback for Reynoldsburg and all of the suburban, and suburban Visitors Bureaus and county Visitors Bureaus, as well as feedback, national concerns, shows that pent-up travel demands remain very high, with 87% of American travelers say that they plan to travel somewhere in the next six months. How does that impact the current post, and post-pandemic times? Well, about half of the travelers surveyed said that the pandemic is causing them to change travel plans in some form or fashion. That is about 9% less than a month ago, which gives the travel industry a little hope that perhaps the worst is over. The worst is over, and the trends are beginning to shift. Concerns about COVID-19 continue to fade with, with 73% of travelers feeling safe, traveling outside their communities, and 69% supporting the, the opening of their communities to visitors. Both of those percentages are pandemic highs, and 73% of travelers feel safe dining and getting their, the visitors into their community. Possibly continuing this shift in mindset among travelers from pandemic to endemic, we see that 31% of American travelers now say that the pandemic has no influence on their travel plans anymore. This is a little, this is a little increase in recent months, again, a sign that perhaps we are getting back to close to normal, back to close to normal in the very near future. International travel data also is very encouraging. I'm not sure if you want to, you know, that's not really a, a major item for us, but it's also very encouraging. Of course, new monk, there's the new monkey in the ranch. The new monkey in the ranch is our, in, in our, in our industry now, is that travel and visitors patterns, patterns are expected to be greatly affected by gasoline prices. That's just something that just came up in the last month or so. The effects of the pandemic and the gas prices will require the tourism industry to be nimble as demands fluctuate and travel prices become much more of a burden on visitors. As you know, our purpose here in Reynoldsburg is to promote visitors, group meetings, and foster economic development, promote historical, cultural, recreational, and natural value activities. We advertise and promote attractions, activities, tourism, and we prepare promotions to various, various appropriate medias. We work in partnership with local organizations like the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Association, Reynoldsburg Helping Hands, the school districts in various phases, as we promote activities that will make people visit Reynoldsburg and get greatly participate in our local activities. Any, if, you know, that, that's pretty much what I have about our industry. Welcome any questions that you have, or if I can't answer it, I will get back to you, but it's pretty much what I have for, for you tonight.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Pacaral?
Not a question, but a statement. Thank you for coming out and speaking, and also, you may want to talk to me about what you're planning for this May, May 21st, right?
Yes. Visitors Bureau, Visitors Bureau is sponsoring a May 21st multicultural day. It's not a festival anymore. We, we decided to call it a day instead of a festival. It's fairly organized, and we have very good participation from various cultures, and we will be doing our promotion in the next couple of weeks. We're going to start our promotion in the next couple of weeks. Also, I just want to tell you that our Reynoldsburg Magazine, which is part of the Visitors Bureau, is coming out with our spring issue of the magazine in a couple of weeks. It'll be in the mail for about 17,000 locations in, in the city. And unfortunately, I don't have a, an overhead, but this is the, this is the cover for your information. The cover is your health in Reynoldsburg. It's focusing on health in Reynoldsburg. This is going to be the cover. And I'm, I'm very glad that, that it's a, it's a great, it's a, it's going to be a great issue. Of course, we are also acknowledging the Reynoldsburg Girls Basketball Team on the front, front cover. It was a late addition, just, just before deadline. We were able to put it on there, and, and I'm, I'm very glad we did. So, our next issue of the Reynoldsburg Magazine will be focusing on the high school, high school heroes, high school students, staff, teachers, going to find, find some really, really nice, good people that, that make our high school great, and that's going to be our focus for, for the fall issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, any questions, or I'd be happy to answer. One, one other thing that I, I, I'm sorry to, I, I, I want to make sure that I recognize is Councilman Cotner, who has been on our, our board for decades, several decades. I want to appreciate, I appreciate his contribution, his support, both as a councilman and as a businessman in Reynoldsburg, has been incredible. Thank you very much.
At this time, we have a presentation by Auditor Sisak and Tax Administrator Lori Giselle for Rita, our favorite person. Rita.
President Jenkins and members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you and the people of Reynoldsburg to teach you a little bit about Rita and why we're here and how we got here. Some of the numbers that you're going to see, and the questions that were answered by Lori Gishel are very in-depth, so I suggest, and I recommend, that you read this report in its entirety a few times. There's a lot of numbers to it, there's a lot to absorb, but I want to let you know, and the people of Reynoldsburg know, that we administer the tax collection with integrity and honesty. We do so in a manner that produces results for our community. We treat people fairly. We embrace diversity and inclusion. We are the stewards of a public trust of our shared resources. And I applaud Finance Chair Salvati for admitting a simple mistake that happens to so many people on February 14th. It's really about bringing awareness and reaching out to different communities of how you can do the job better. But if we go to our second slide, on the executive level and the high-end stuff, I want you to see what our, our collections have been. You see, they're trending upwards. The numbers at the top, last year's 25,313,000. But remember, we get 73%, I'm sorry, 73 cents on the dollar goes, goes to the general fund, 15 cents on the dollar to the CIP, and 12 cents on the dollar to your debt fund. So, that equals about $18.5 million in the general fund. The next slide, please. The trend line shows a reduction of about 25% in our rate. So, this shows our retainer, our true-up refund, and our cost of our collections. And you see, in 2011, it was a 1.92%, and it ended last year with 1.4%. Next slide, please. So, that equals 1.63% over 10 years. Every year, we have a retainer and a true-up. The information that Lori's going to have are, is questions I wouldn't even know to ask, but because of her specialization in running the Rita office in Worthington, she has great insight into this. The next two slides are just Rita members. I remember when I was here, I said it was Worthington that was not on there, it was actually Westerville I was thinking about. There's also Dublin and Whitehall. And my last slide for the high-level things is, I've received no complaints regarding service from any taxpayer in the city of Reynoldsburg, and I asked city council for their copies of their complaints, and I have not received any. It's low-hanging fruit to be able to knock the tax collection process, but as one of the best quotes that I've heard this year is, "Politics and taxes don't mix." Our taxes bring every city service that we have, from police to streets to parks and rec. Everything that we have comes from our municipal income tax, or about 82% of it. And with that information said, I want to bring Lori Gishel, I had here to you, to go over her slide. She has about 26 of them. I want to be respectful of your time, so please, if you have questions, wait for the end, because she's really good at her presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Sisak, and thank you, council, for having us this evening. I'd like to acknowledge and I appreciate the request that was made on the February 14th meeting. As Mr. Sisak said, I did have a long tenure with the Regional Income Tax Agency. I started out, just to give you a little bit of background about myself, I started out with the city of Columbus as an income tax auditor. Within two years, was promoted to a supervisor. Within five years, I went to the Regional Income Tax Agency as one of their managers, and I ended my tenure there as one of the directors. So, I do take it very seriously, the income tax administration, as well as our partnership with the Regional Income Tax Agency. I feel that, and I think I shared that maybe the last time I was here at council, I feel like that's one of the, the advantages that I have in this position for you, is that I know the inner workings of the Regional Income Tax Agency. So, as Mr. Sisak or Auditor Sisak has shared with me, he has seen reports out of that agency that he did not know existed. So, we're trying to use those to the city's benefit. We're trying to make some changes, and I, I applaud you as well for asking for... And I applaud you as well for asking for this, because I think that that is part of my responsibility and the position that I hold here with the city, as well as the auditor and, of course, council, is that we need to make sure that the services that we're receiving are where we expect them to be, what we're paying for. And as always, it may not be, it is at this time, it was five years, 10 years, the best for the city, but it's good to review that from time to time. So we would welcome that anytime that you would like for us to do a presentation of this nature. So I will try to, we'll start here with the agenda, and I'm going to try to, through this presentation, answer the questions that you had or the comments that came up during that February 14th meeting. But of course, if there's any other questions, please feel free to ask. So we're going to cover the regional council of governments, as well as the Regional Income Tax Agency, also known as Rita. What is that? How is that governed? Our neighboring communities? Who are they? What are they doing? What works best for them and what works best for us? As well as the numbers that Mr. Sisak just mentioned? What's in those numbers? The comparisons of our neighboring communities? And lastly, the advantages of Rita versus in-house tax collection? So the biggest misperception out there is that Rita is a for-profit agency. It is not. It is a government entity, just like the city of Reynoldsburg. We, actually, we, the municipalities, it was 28 that started the regional income, started the council of governments, came together in 1971 to form this council of governments for the sole purpose of income tax administration. It was their first act, then, to form what is known as the Regional Income Tax Agency. So we are that agency. We, the municipalities. We partner with our neighboring communities. By doing so, we're able to capitalize on economies of scale. We're able to hire teams of subject matter experts. We're able to have resources, the most powerful resource that they have is the access to the IRS information, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But as a group, that regional council of governments is, governs, governs the body of Rita. It is governed, much like we are as a city. It's made up of a nine-member board of trustees. That board has rotating three-year terms, and we, the city of Reynoldsburg, have one vote. That election is held every year for those board members. Our closest board member is Mr. Scott Gill. He works for the city of Grandview Heights. Currently, Rita is composed, comprised of about 14, just over 1,400 member municipalities and Jeds, serving in 78 Ohio counties. The beauty of it is, though, that Reynoldsburg still, as a member, retains our right to administer and enforce our own income tax laws, which, as you know, as Chapter 190. So who are our neighboring communities? Of the 14 largest suburbs of Columbus, 11 of those 14 are with Rita, notated here by the yellow and red stars. Typically, cost effectiveness, level of service, knowledge of agents with shared service, in this case Rita, oftentimes makes sense for many reasons, including overall cost to the city, which is why 11 of the 14 are currently part of and using the Regional Income Tax Agency. Again, that doesn't mean that we can never change, or that at some point in time, it might not be the best solution for the city of Reynoldsburg. But at this time, and we will go through the presentation here, we still believe that is, that to be true, that it is the most cost-effective and offers the most services to our residents for the income tax that we collect. Mr. Sisak showed this particular graph earlier. What I'd like to point out to you here, if I kind of get this thing working, is, so a lot of times, people talk about, oh, the cost is 3%. The cost is 3%. In our case, the cost is not 3%. However, because it's a nonprofit, quasi nonprofits agency, a government entity, Rita needs money to operate off of throughout the year so that it can pay its bills. So what it does is, the motto is set so that it retains 3% of all collections as they are distributed. As you know, well, actually, back in the day, Rita only distributed once a month. When things started to change with our economy several years back, they changed to twice a month that we get our, that we get our monies. When they do that, they retain 3% so that they have money to operate off of. In 2020, our 3% was $756,000. However, when they do the true-up that Mr. Sisak talked about earlier, which is typically done every June, we then receive what is referred to as a retainer refund. Our refund in 2020 was $394,000. Net overall cost to the city was $361,000. In order to collect almost $26 million, giving us a percentage of 1.4% cost of collections. So if my math is correct, Rita is only charging us just over one cent per transaction in order to collect and assist us in administering the income tax. So now I'd like to talk to you about what is in the numbers. So we know what the cost is, but what is Rita doing for us? On an outward-facing, what you or most of our constituents might see as phone calls, walk-in taxpayer service, service requests, and/or I have a problem with my account, can you assist me? In 2020 alone, Rita provided those type of services to, at a total of almost 10,000. 2021, that was almost 14,000 transactions, just in the outward-facing items that you see here listed under activity type. I'd like to point out here, because in a little bit, we're going to talk about something else, and I'd like it for you to note this. So of those services, the majority of that is being provided to what is classified as our individual taxpayers. That would be our residents. This net profit category are our businesses and also, to some extent, withholder. But that is, the withholders are the businesses that are the conduit for their employees. They're withholding the money and transmitting it on behalf of them. So as you can see, the bulk of our work is being handled for our residents. That's important when we start to do the comparisons. So I hear the complaint about, well, it takes too long, I'm on hold, I can't speak with an agent, I can't get the service that I need. Rita's response times last year, which was an extended filing season, whoops, because of COVID, 3.53 minutes for the average wait time to speak with an agent on the three busiest days of the year. Those same days, they took over 6,500 phone calls. We highlighted April 15th here, because of that extended, it was a much easier day last year because of the extended season. How can Rita do this? They have over 200 agents working for us in six locations across the state of Ohio. Those agents are what we refer to as subject matter experts. They are our agents. Again, it's our agency. So the beauty of that is, is we, as a city, and myself, as a tax administrator, if we have a question about a business return, whether it's an S corp, C corp, maybe it's a pass-through entity, we have a team of, a team of agents that specialize only on those business forms. So if something changes with federal code, and now there's a question of, how does this business file? Do I need to pay on this? We have that access to those subject matter experts readily available. We have teams of paralegals working for us. I'll share with you some of the legal statistics. We have attorneys on staff and the like. So in addition to just the phone calls, how can I get in contact with Rita? And I'm sharing some of those, too, for our residents as we go, because I know, as I spoke with Councilmember Pacarao earlier, some of the things we'd like to get out, and I appreciate, too, Councilmember Salvati allowing us and asking for this presentation. It's a perfect time of year to let people know, what are your obligations and how do I make this happen? So I'd just like to quickly go over a few items. One is, there's access to an interactive voice response system, something that we, as a city, may or may not be able to afford to put in place ourselves. Most of those communities that are non-Rita do not have that. It's a 24-hour phone system, much like if you were to call in for your credit card to make a payment, they ask you to key in your credit card number. In this case, we ask you to key in your social security number. That is your account number. When you do so, your information automatically pops on the agent's screen so that when they pick up the handset, they are ready to serve you right then. They can see your account, they can see your filings right at their desktop. That same information is also available to me internally here as I work in our partnership with Rita. You have the ability to talk with an agent. The call is recorded for quality and security purposes. The taxpayers also have an option to take a survey at the end of the call. These are things that, again, Rita as an agency and we, as members of that agency, consider a high priority, because we know it is our, they are our constituents that we are serving through that partnership with Rita. I encourage you, as councilmembers, as well as our administration, if there's ever a time that you hear of a complaint or something that is a problem, feel free to reach out to me. Let me know. Encourage the taxpayer to contact us. We want to make sure, again, that we're getting the service that we are paying for and to the level of expectation for our residents and our businesses. I would also like to share that I know, the mayor and I have talked about Facebook and how some of the fun comments on there, and I think, I call it the, "Everybody's Skinny and Happy on Facebook." So you have to kind of sort through to find out what is actual true statements that are being, what are half-trues, and the like. I am intentionally not connected to the city Facebook page. However, I do hear and see some of the postings, and I will share with you that in my tenure here, I have reached out to a few of those individuals that have made comments that I feel, felt were of concern or legitimate complaint about Rita and tried to address those items. So again, if you ever have anything, please feel free to reach out, because we want to educate and we want to help those individuals. The last item I want to touch on there in contacting Rita and the resources is the My Account. The My Account is available on the website, and that is a way for individuals to file, pay, register, send secure emails to an agent and the like. So what's happening, that's out front. Behind the scenes, so just for Reynoldsburg alone, Rita filed just over 65,000 forms for us, the last year, five-year average, for electronic services. There's the statistics there for the registrations. I also want to point out the filings and the payments. So in 2021, they took nearly, just over 14,000 submissions electronically in the amount of 9.7-plus million. The e-services, so this is an area, too, that I want to highlight, two different reasons. One is, and you'll see in gold letters, MEF. What does that stand, stands for modernized e-filing. So the IRS, back in 2004, they started introducing the modernized e-filing. This is kind of liquid gold for all of us tax geeks. The reason why is, it's allowing large firms and taxware soft company, software companies to file their, their taxpayer information basically in bulk. They upload it, there's certain fields. The IRS has defined those fields for any IT people out here, it's, they're using XML as the language there. And what it allows them to do is, say, an ADP, a large payroll provider, they can file their information, sent, it's sent to the IRS one time. The fields are all identified through this XML language. Each field is then recognized, and it is split off. So it knows whether Field A, B, C, G goes to the IRS. Do those same fields go to the state of Ohio? Do those same fields go to Rita? It has, the benefits of that are, one, as I said, it's making it very easy for those large companies. Two, it also helps to reduce errors. Three, they're getting a immediate confirmation that their items and their returns for their taxpayers have been filed. It also applies to software companies. So if your particular preparer is using one of the software, softwares listed here on the left-hand side, and this is the product name, then their information, your information as an individual taxpayer is going the same way. The second thing I want to point out on this is TurboTax. TurboTax is also known, it's Intuit, is the company. The reason I want to point that out is because that is probably one of the most, the major, I guess, most often heard complaint when we are doing compliance programs. We, Rita, any of the communities. Well, I filed my return. I filed a non-TurboTax. TurboTax does have a Rita look-alike form, which is wonderful. It helps with that. But TurboTax is not the TurboTax that you're buying just off the shelf as an individual, unless it has changed this year, which I don't believe it has. It is not filing that form electronically for you. It tells you on there, you need to print that form and mail it in. Some people don't recognize that. However, TurboTax does have software packages that have, are more sophisticated. A lot of preparers are using them. It's LaCert and ProConnect are the names of those. And they do file and push that electronically for those preparers. But that's one of the items that I would like to, for our residents, to understand, is that please make sure, if you use H&R Block, now H&R Block has recently, in the last few years, changed their software, it's called BlockWorks, and it is electronically submitting that. But that was also similar to TurboTax a few years back. But please make sure, if you're having your taxes prepared, they hand you a packet, it has a Rita form in there, or a city of Reynoldsburg, that you're either asking the question or looking at the instructions that your preparer has provided you on whether or not you need to mail that in to the city or to Rita. Okay, so for the compliance programs, I'm going to, well, just quickly on here. So this is Rita's splash page on the Rita website. This is Rita's, I'm sorry, Reynoldsburg's unique page. So again, that goes back to, it's our ordinance. We can set certain guidelines for our ordinance, U.S. council, make those choices with Chapter 190. This here is available if a preparer or a resident has a question on taxability, is this item taxable or not taxable, things of the like. When was Reynoldsburg's tax rate change? All of that information is on there. They also have a page for each of our JEDs. You can link right to those JEDs through these links on the Reynoldsburg page. So again, behind the scenes, compliance is the next piece. And that's a large piece, one that we just went through and happy to share the statistics with you here in a minute. There's two types of compliance. There's the non-filing compliance, those that we believe owe a return, have either filed in the past, or we have other resources, whether it be a W-2, state ads, state information, or IRS information that indicates that there may be someone that needs to file that has not filed. The second piece is non-payment. Those are for the individuals that have filed, but they have not yet paid, or they have started a payment plan and defaulted. So for the non-filing program, there is a partially, it's a partially added service. It's a three-step program. We just went through this recently. We started the program last June. The first step is to issue friendly reminders, AKA non-filer notices. We issued about 15,000 of those last fall. Typically, you get about a 30, 25% to 30% response off of those. We did not this time. We believe that part of that is driven by COVID, by the pandemic, especially once we started receiving the forms that were due for '19 and '20. The second step was to issue the subpoenas. We have done that. That is an added service. It is typically $8 per subpoena. Because of the pandemic and the agents not being able to be onsite due to the pandemic, that charge this past year was $1 per subpoena. We issued about 13, 14,000 of those. As you can see, it was a very successful program for us. The program is still open and they are still working and collecting, but to date, they have identified just under $1 million. They've collected, actually, I got an update today, they have collected about 281,000 to date, and that program only cost us $14,000. The third part of that program is for the federal tax information. Again, this is municipalities coming together. I don't know if any of you were here about, that would have been, I think, about 15 years ago now, when Rita went to Washington, lobbied for access to the IRS information, but it was a true grassroots effort by our mayors, managers, and council members in all writing letters and even some attending lobbying efforts with us in Washington to gain access to that information. Previously, the federal government recognized cities with population of over 500,000 to gain access to that. So it was basically our large five cities here in Ohio. But they have now since recognized Rita as servicing a population of over a million as one combined effort. That is our most powerful resource yet, and it is provided to us at no additional cost. Now, because there's a treasury agreement wrapped around that, I want to assure you that not everybody at Rita even has access to that information. There are only about, I'm going to say about 15 now, I don't know the exact count, but about 15 individuals that have access to that because of the security that surrounds that and the requirements of the IRS. But to do that, they're working around the year for us, and in 2020, they were able to identify another $400,000 and collect just under $345,000. So what about for the non-payment? Those that have filed a return, we know they owe, but they have not yet paid. Again, it's a partially added service, but Reynoldsburg does currently participate in all three steps. The first step is accelerated collection efforts. I want you to know that when somebody does owe, Rita is not being assertive, aggressive, whatever term you want to, velvet hammer, I've heard, right off the bat. They are trying to work with individuals. They make phone calls, they set up payment plans and the like. It would only get to, step two, legal action, is if they ignored that, any of those calls, letters, they do a series of letters, they get more assertive, they ignore those, and/or they default on a payment plan. At that point, it would go to step two, and we do pay for this added service. Rita is doing the court filings on our behalf. They are also attending the hearings. Once again, they have a team of paralegals and attorneys working for us on these efforts. Step three is a post-judgment. The post-judgment is actually done by a third-party administrator, I'm sorry, yeah, a third-party administrator for law firm, and they do the garnishments and liens. That's once we receive the judgment. We are actually looking at, and this is one of the areas that, with my experience with Rita, I note, I noticed back in the fall that there were some changes in our legal fees, the number of filings that they had. So I reached out to Rita to see what was going on. Well, sure enough, because as all of you know, Franklin County courts were closed for a long period of time, and then they changed the way they do things because of the pandemic. Well, what that did was, it took a very successful, extremely successful program that Rita already had set up with, in this case Franklin County, for us and our neighboring communities, and it changed that process. Most of it now is online. They were, even the filings and the way they file those are now different from small claims. They're looking at some of those as civil. So one of the areas that's also available, and we are exploring, and I'm exploring this with Rita, is we can take cases through the Attorney General, the Ohio Attorney General's office. So we're currently looking at that to see if that would be more cost-effective for us, what type of success rate we would have. We're going to start with a small population and do a trial on that. But I also want you to know that even though there's changes with that program, still very successful program the way it is. In 2020, they took 117 cases for us. Liabilities were almost 160,000. They've collected 110,000 that year, and the cost was just, total cost, I noted that, was just over $8,800, and that included the post-judgment with the third party. And the statistics are there for you for '21. So I kind of alluded to this a little bit earlier about some of the complaints and what are we doing, and we're making some changes. One of the other complaints that we heard is that, you know, the "I don't know." So we've tried to increase some digital awareness here. Jennifer Clem, Ms. Clemens, has been great with that, as the mayor and Auditor Sisak. We've been doing some more little tax blurbs in the Reynoldsburg Connects. We've taken advantage of the magazine, Joe Show, changes on the website. Jennifer's doing quite a few social media posts, and we're trying to monitor that a little bit as well. So what about our seniors? We're also trying to address that. I've been working with the ARPS group a little bit over at the senior center as they prepare federal, state, and local taxes. We took two of our main forms, the exemption form, which would apply to most of our seniors, the declaration of exemption. They just have to fill it out one time. It's a one-page form. Basically, name, address, check, I think it's box four or five, that you're retired, put that date in there, sign it, send it in. That's if you have no earned income, if you only have pension and social security income. If you have any questions on that, again, I would encourage you as a taxpayer or council to contact us. The other one-page form, we took what is known as a Rita drop-off form. We tailored it to Reynoldsburg. Name, address, attach your W-2s, federal schedules, if you have any, Schedule CE, the like. Sign it, send it in, they will calculate it for you, send the bill. In addition to those two forms and getting them out there on the Rita website, we have translated both of those forms into Nepali. We're working with our translation vendor to get those in Spanish and Somali, and they should be out within the next two to three weeks. The last item that we are looking at, and I've talked to others about, is we want to start using our city water welcome packet, trying to get a one-page tax sheet to news housing developments, realtors, the like. I'd like to work with the schools on this because we get a lot of questions about the school district tax. That particular tax is administered by the state of Ohio, so we are not able to answer any questions for them on that, but we can provide them with the 800 number, website and the like. So we'd like to, I think, if they're open to it, provide a one-page and include both the city and tax information as well as the school information. Okay, so here's the map again about our neighboring communities. Once again, just a reminder that 11 of the 14 are currently using Rita. The next slide shows you, this is the Rita retainer refund, and we've stripped off here those same 11 communities. What I want to point out here is our average for just those 11, they collect, the average is just over $23 million. The cost per transaction is just over 2 points, with a total cost of collections of 1.3%. Now, if you look here, it's varying populations. I point that out because now we're going to get into, well, how do I know? Why is one person paying more than the other? Why would you have a community such as Grandview Heights only at 1.4% and Reynoldsburg is at 1.4? So we're going to explain that here a little bit, and it mainly has to do with population, but a lot of it with the business makeup of all of these communities. And thank you to the gentleman that spoke earlier because everybody wants to compare us to the city of Dublin, and I'm going to share with you why we cannot compare ourselves for tax purposes to the city of Dublin. So here you can see, of these Rita communities, I have stripped off for you, whoops, and shown you, these are the ones with like populations, similar populations, similar collections. You have a few that are outliers here, like Hilliard. But overall, the cost of collections, the average for that group is 1.37, and we are just over that at 1.4. So one of the other items that I would get when I was with Rita all the time, speaking with councils, and I actually received within the last two weeks here by one of my colleagues is, well, yeah, but I know communities, a village, say, the village of, I don't know, pick a village, the village of Asheville, the village of Thurston, they are Rita cities. But the reason I want to point that out is because they have, there are self-collectors out there, they have one tax individual, one tax administrator that serves that community. Well, why can't we do it with one individual? Why can't we do it with two? I'm going to point back here to, this is our, these are the forms that were filed for us, the five-year average. That village that has a population of 3,500, right there, that's just our business returns that were filed, 3,500. We need, if we were going to do it in-house, we would need full-time employees that are going to file and process the remainder of just these returns. That doesn't include all of those outward-facing services that we discussed. That doesn't include access to the IRS information. It doesn't include teams of subject matter experts. So let's look at our neighboring communities that don't use Rita and their numbers. For tax purposes, the reason that we can't compare ourselves to Dublin is Dublin collects $92 million a year. We're not even close to that. However, there's, I'm told that they're hitting that 100,000 mark this year. So I point that out because Dublin, each community is unique. That's what people like. That's what people like about Reynoldsburg. They come to our community because of our type of community, what has been built here for the services, for the businesses that are here, the community, and what we have to offer. But in looking at that, Dublin, and the example I will use, Dublin has over 2,000 businesses that they administer for. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we are just in the neighborhood of over between 100 and 200. Is that correct? Yes. So that's why, and if we look at even just one of their large businesses, and I'm just going to go around the 270 outer belt, if you're driving 270, Cardinal Health Nationwide, those are all sitting in Dublin. It doesn't take a lot of effort and a lot of manpower to process a check from one of those large businesses for $100,000 or maybe even $500,000. But in order for a community our size to collect that same $100,000 or $500,000, it may take us hundreds or thousands of transactions or checks to process and returns to process to come up with that same number. So I share that with you because, as you can see here, their overall cost of collections, that's part of what's driving it down, are the number of large businesses in that community and the number of businesses as a whole. Now, their population is higher than ours. They're currently using eight employees to do that service at a cost of just $100, $900,000. Westerville, next one down, JP Morgan Chase. I can continue to name the large businesses. It's not confidential information, it's public. You can see those buildings as you drive around the 270 outer belt. Same thing, they're at almost $50 million collection. However, they're at 1.9%. I'm just going to touch on Whitehall to say, Whitehall, I think we all know their large employer, or one of their large employers is the Defense Center. So that's part of what's allowing them to drive their overall cost down. But I will point out that Whitehall, we did survey these three communities. Whitehall did point out they're at five full-time employees and that they feel that they need a fifth employee to get that done. So what is, how does Reynoldsburg shake out using Rita? Well, we have 193 employees. Why do we have that? Because we have, at the time that I, again, we're using the numbers because 2020 is available at this time. I mentioned that they are now over 200 employees. But we have those employees plus myself available to our constituents and to our businesses. So going back to Westerville here, I want to compare them, that 1.9%, they probably won't be happy with me that I'm sharing this, but I am sharing it. So when you look at the Rita communities, the closest that I could find to them was New Albany. So New Albany has less collections, but yet their costs are less than Westerville. Once again, large business community, large business community, and they're driving that cost down. Even though New Albany has a higher population than Westerville, they're able to read it along with New Albany, they're able to do it for less. So I point this out and I say, and this is where I say, Westerville might not be happy with me, is maybe Westerville needs to call Rita and see if Rita can assist them and do some type of partnership. and see if Rita can assist them, and do some type of partnership. Maybe it's not a whole thing, but some type of partnership. Lastly, again, based off of those surveys, and your questions of, what are the advantages and disadvantages of being with Rita? And is it still cost-effective for the city of Reynoldsburg? We feel that it is. This sums it up pretty good, and there is one checkbox here, and it's a big one, we recognize that. And that is, with Rita, the in-house service has more local control, and that was the consensus from the three for the surveys. They have more local control of the outward-facing services, as well as the process. But at the same time, when we look at that, and we consider that, that we also have a dedicated member service agents with local control of our ordinance, and a local team member here to help monitor that service. This is everything that they're giving up, all these check marks that are here and not here, with the major ones being this modernized E-filing that we talked about, the liquid gold, as well as access to the IRS information. So, I know that was a long presentation, but we wanted to make sure that, because we don't do this too often for you, that all of you as council understand what services Rita is helping us to provide, that it is a partnership, and that we are part of that regional council of governments, and controlling that governing board. So, with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
So, just briefly, I wanted to say thank you, because that was a great presentation. One of the main reasons I wanted this isn't just for all this information, it's because of the situation we're in. One of the little silver threads that COVID gave us was the fact that this is now captured on video, or in perpetuity, at least until it's out of date. So, even though we had 20 or so people watching on Facebook, we have all of Reynoldsburg that can access this anytime they want to on Facebook, or maybe later on our brand-new webpage. So, I just wanted to say thanks. It covered everything I wanted to hear, that's for sure. I just wanted to add a couple other real minor things. I just, you know, to touch on what you said about Facebook, I agree that a lot of the stuff on Facebook, I kind of just push aside. But one of the main reasons that, you know, sort of spurred me to do this are a couple of comments that are less hyperbolic, but that get made a lot. And that's, you know, A, I moved here from wherever, whether it be Columbus, or Florida, or, and I didn't even know what the heck Rita was. You know, and sometimes I didn't know what they were for seven, eight, nine years, which can really become an issue at some point. And the other thing is, so many people seem to think that Rita is an extra tax that we're imposing as Reynoldsburg. You know, like, there's all the normal taxes they think of, and then in addition to that, we have Rita. And they don't realize that it's not an additional thing, it's just the way we collect a traditional thing. So, that's the two main things I see on Facebook a lot, that, you know, aren't the hyperbolic complaints, but they're just things that this will, you know, get out of the way right away. And the other super-important thing, the thing that I fell, not really victim to, because I caught it, but is, you know, file to Rita specifically. Because I fell victim to my tax program sort of alluding to the fact that I had filed Rita. And, you know, as it turns out, out of the 18 years I've been in Reynoldsburg, I've never had to owe to Rita. Until last year, I owed $14 because of my wife's work situation. So, I happened to go check to pay it, and found out that I hadn't filed. Had I owed zero, I don't know that I would have checked to see if I filed, because I would have just thought I did. So, I just wanted to, you already said it, but I wanted to reiterate that it's super, super easy to file Rita on Rita's website, or file a paper form directly to Rita. And that, I mean, I know a lot of people use their tax service or whatnot, and if you do, and they say they filed Rita, just go check and make sure that you actually did file Rita, even if you owed zero. So, that's all my comments, I'm not going to talk forever.
Madam President, and Councilmember Savadi, thank you for bringing that up. And yes, I can't stress enough that we are trying to, we recognize that, we're trying to put some additional education material out there, work with the individuals. So, I know that some of you are connected to our Facebook page. Sometimes, addressing tax matters on a forum such as that maybe aren't always the best way to do that. But if you feel comfortable to at least maybe put something there to say, contact our tax department, or contact Rita, they will assist you. That would be fine. And again, we'll continue to increase the level of education as we go forward.
Oh, and it's nice that I now have this to point to. Go listen to this. I can tell them the exact minute that they need to fast-forward to, to hear it, unless they want to.
Unless they want to go to sleep. I'll be the first to admit, taxes are boring.
Yes, Councilman.
Actually, I got a couple of questions. One is actually on page 20. Can you scroll to page 20, Molly, on the presentation? Thank you. Yeah, the estimated population, is that the number before? We got the official number from the census?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're using the right number.
Yes, I just went out, and I used the latest census that was available online.
At that time, okay.
Yes, and that's why I kind of highlighted that. And some of those numbers are also from MorpC, because some of them were pulled from, directly from the, and I might get this wrong now, it's no longer the one, it's the annual comprehensive review reports for the cities. So, that's a public document for those cities that file them, such as us, it's a financial, annual financial report. So, some of them were pulled straight from there.
Okay. My other question is, when you talked about getting information out to senior centers, Facebook, social platforms popped in my head, and I didn't see it on the slide, obviously, is trying to get that information to the library, or across the street to the post office, places where you know that there's going to be heavy traffic of people going to possibly help get the information out even more than just the internet, per se, just throwing that idea out there. Another one was, you said Rita charged Reynoldsburg 3% to disperse the funds, or to collect the funds, I can't remember.
So, Rita retains 3% to have money to operate off of throughout the year. So, each disbursement that we receive, they retain 3% of that. But then, they close the year, they actually go through an audit, because as a government entity like us, they're going through a state audit as well, each year. Once their audit, the books are closed, audit's complete, they're on a fiscal year-end. Then, in June of each year, they shore that up. I did not include that here. However, the formula that's used for that is they compare our transit, which is in this spreadsheet here. They compare our transactions to Rita as a whole. And then, they also compare our collections to Rita as a whole, determine what was our share, our percentage share that year. So, that is a fluid number from year to year, because even Rita's base membership is changing from year to year. They are now at, as I mentioned, just over 400 jurisdictions and Jeds. So, I'm actually interested to see what the new intel is going to do for all of us as Rita members. Because, as you know, it's based in New Albany, and all of us in the neighboring communities, it will hopefully drive in business, and hopefully assist with those numbers.
Also, so it's 3% for the entire year, not just per?
It's actually, ours is only 1 point, in 2020, ours was only 1.4.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's all the question.
And the five-year average, I think, is 1.45. But as you could see from that one graph with the trending line, it actually, it has been going down, oh, there it was. It has been going down the last 10 years, overall Reynoldsburg costs. We had a few blips here and there.
Thank you.
I just wanted to quickly mention that for anybody watching now, or will watch later, that the slides weren't on the Facebook feed. They are available in our detailed agenda. And I'm sure if they want their own sparkling copy, that you guys, the auditor's office, would probably be happy to send them to you, if you need the slides.
We'll try and get a link on our webpage sometime this week.
And that, too.
Thank you. I mean, this is very, this is really a long time coming. I think this information will quell a lot of the Facebook complaints about Rita and tax question. Probably won't, but it will, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for helping us to get the message out.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing. This is the public hearing portion of the meeting. Comments related to either of these two ordinances may be made during this time. Speakers should step to the microphone, give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole, and not exceed three minutes. Would the clerk please read the first ordinance?
An ordinance to amend ordinance 30-2021, adopted on April 12, 2021, and to approve and authorize the execution and delivery of amendment, number one of the Joint Economic Development District, contract number seven, between Etna Township and the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio,
No comments. As there are no further comments, I close this public hearing. Would the clerk please read the second ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the city of Reynoldsburg for a property located at 6320 East Main Street, from Bryce and Main Street District, BMD, to Community Commercial District, CC.
No comments. As there are no further comments, I will leave this public hearing open until the next council meeting, following receipt of recommendations from the Planning Commission. Next, we have motions. A motion to approve a resolution to confirm the mayoral appointment of Eric Meyer, Economic Development Director, to the Licking County Tax Incentive Review Council for a term of two years, ending December 31, 2023. With the transition of development directors, a new city representative to the Licking County Tax Incentive Review Council needs to be appointed. That appointee is selected by the mayor, and affirmed by city council. Mayor Begany has recommended current development director Eric Meyer to fill that position. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilmember Packerell, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports. The auditors report. Clerk Presser, please.
The auditor submitted, the auditor submitted the budget by department and classification for the month of February 2022. The next report is from the clerk of court. The clerk of court submitted monies collected from the courts held on December in the amount of $14,530, in January of $11,518, and in February of $16,863. She also apologized for the late reporting as the department transitioned to their new software.
Next, we have West Licking County Fire District report. Councilmember Baker.
Molly, I find that inexcusable. I said I found that inexcusable, but I'm just messing with you. The, for the West Licking Fire District report, you'll see in the packets the statistical data for last month. Just wanted to point out that Reynoldsburg is still getting outstanding service from the West Licking Fire District, basically saying that our tax dollars are being put hard to work. And so, just want to submit that report, Madam President.
Next, we have Development Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development Park and Recreation Committee meeting for March 28, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Packerell, myself, and you, Madam President. We have two items on the agenda. The first item is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the city of Reynoldsburg for a property located at 6320 East Main Street, from Bryce and Main Street District to Community Commercial District, CC. Director Meyer?
Thank you. As you folks know, this is part of our typical process for rezoning, where a project, in this case introduced by a private developer, is here. We propose a first reading, then ultimately would be sent to Planning Commission for their review. And then, if going through there, back to city council. So, what I'm asking for here is simply the first reading, then sending this to Planning Commission for them to do their work. And this is, as I was noted earlier, for the project Skulkin is presenting, for the former Walgreens on Main rezoning from Bryce and Main to, or Bryce and Main Street District to Community Commercial District.
Any questions from the committee? For Director Meyer? Any from council? Okay, seeing none. Seeing as there's no questions or comments for the committee, I'll make the motion, I will go ahead and forward this one to council for its first reading, and send the application to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson-Roe. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? As have it, this ordinance would be forwarded to council for its first reading, and to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. The second item on the agenda is an ordinance to approve the final plat plan for the Eastwood Development. Director Meyer?
Thank you, Councilman. This plat has gone through the Planning Commission, has gone through the approval process there. What we're asking for here is for city council to approve the plat, and then ultimately it will be filed with the county to become final. So, this is part of the traditional process when you're replating a property. As I mentioned, this has already gone through Planning Commission, and is returned back to city council for approval. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee to Director Meyer? Any from council? Okay. I've seen none, I'll move that before this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? As have it, this ordinance will be forwarded on the council for its first reading. And I was wrong, we had three items on the agenda for the committee. I do apologize. The third item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend ordinance 30-2021, adopt on, adopted on April 12, 2021, and to approve and authorize the execution- and to approve and authorize the execution and delivery of amendment number one of the Joint Economic Development District Contract Number Seven between Etna Township and the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Attorney Shuck?
Yes, thank you, Chair Baker. This is an amendment to the JET 7 contract with Etna Township. It would add an additional parcel to the JET 7 district. Because we're adding an additional parcel, that's why we had a public hearing earlier in the meeting. The amendment for this parcel is going to have a different share of the percentage of revenue generated. For the first parcel in which there is a FedEx distribution hub that's been developed, there was no share to the Southwest Licking School District. With this respective parcel, because the school district is approving a 100% 15-year tax abatement on this parcel, the school district is entitled to 30% of gross revenue under this contract. We still receive our 20% of net revenue, but consequently, our pie will, our piece of the pie will be a little bit smaller under this agreement. There is some confusion still about what the township is going to do with this jet amendment. We had previously received, you know, some indication that they were prepared to approve it. Then there's a holdup. All I'm asking at this time is just to move it forward for a first read. If there's a holdup, we'll hold the legislation from any vote and present it to council for a vote at the time in which we expect that the township has passed a resolution to approve the same. I don't expect any changes to the contract. There's an ancillary issue the township wants addressed first.
Okay. Is there any questions from the committee on this item? I just have one question. You said we're going to receive a smaller piece of the pie this time. What is the number on that?
Well, we still.
Our percentage of.
Yeah, we receive 20% of the net revenue. The net revenue is going to be reduced by the fact that the school district now receives 30% of the gross. Under the, for the first parcel that was added into JET 7, the school district doesn't receive anything from the gross revenue. So while we still receive our 20% net, that net amount is proportionally reduced.
Oh, okay, I got you. All right, is there any questions from the council? Councilman Savadi?
Just to clarify, just for my clarification. If, if the township didn't approve this, the facility is still built, right? It just wouldn't be jetted?
No, the FedEx facility is built. And the way that this works is that the developer is only going to go forward if they have the assurances that come along with the community reinvestment area agreement and the jet contract. Without the jet amendment, this, whatever facility they're planning to build here will not get built. My understanding right now is that the township is asking the developer to improve their screening that is associated with the FedEx site. And until they get assurances that that screening is going to be, is going to happen, they will not approve this contract. I don't intend to actually ask you to vote on this until I know that the township has approved it. We have six months that we can hold it. But we had already noticed this for 30 days for a public hearing. I didn't want to notice it for another public hearing just because we recently found out there was a holdup. Wanted to go ahead and have the public hearing tonight, first here, first reading tonight, so we can get at least through that part of the process.
Thank you. That was more for my curiosity.
Is there any other questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. I'll make the motion that we go ahead and forward this ordinance on to council for its first reading. Is there a second? Councilman Packerell? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, eyes have it, this ordinance will be forwarded on to council for its first reading. As an emergency, I want to make sure that was in for the record, too. As there's no further business for the Development Park and Recreation Committee, I return this back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety Law and Courts Committee. Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you. This is the Public Safety Laws and Courts Committee meeting for March 28, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Packerell, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and President Jenkins. Item one is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with modern office methods for the copiers for the Police Department and waive competitive bidding. Deputy Chief, do you have anything for us on this?
We're saving money. We found out it was on a state bid. It's the same company, the same thing we've been doing. We just found a way to save money. So that should make you happy, right?
I dig it.
Me, too.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? All right, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Second item is an ordinance to reappropriate funds approved by ordinance number 172-2021, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Invers Training Solutions for a new indoor targeting system and training system and appropriating funds, therefore, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance is being requested as a single-read emergency. Deputy Chief?
There was a clerical error. We actually opened a PO in 2021. It was funded. So we're just asking to have the money put back in the general, or it went to the general fund. We're asking it to reallocate it back to the PO so that we can spend it to improve the range, which you already approved.
All right. Any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? And council? All right, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there's no further business before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting, or committee, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair Bryant. It will not be for a first reading. It'll be for emergency approval. That was an error. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting this evening. Next, we have Finance and Administration Committee. Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for March 28, 2022. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. First item on the agenda is an ordinance to establish Section 160.13 Paid Family Leave of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg. This ordinance has been brought back to the committee to be amended. I'm going to guess that maybe the attorney is going to speak on this, or is it the mayor?
I'll just give a brief overview of the amendment. I believe council members received an email from the Auditor's Office expressing some concern about this ordinance. The amendment doesn't address all of their concerns. It does address one particular concern, which is that employees who are on paid leave, paid family leave, are still accruing vacation time. So we added in a provision that there's no vacation time accrual during that paid family leave portion. And so we are asking that council amend the ordinance in committee to reflect that change, and then send the amended ordinance to council for, I believe it's third read and vote this evening.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the committee on the amended language for this, or the whole legislation? Any comments from the rest of council? All right, seeing none, I move we amend the ordinance to include the new, the new language proposed as presented in council's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Strickland. All right, any final discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. So this ordinance is amended. I now move we forward this ordinance to council for its third reading and approval. Do I have a second for that? Second from Councilmember Baker, Bryant, sorry. Any final discussion? Lots of Bs down there. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the amended motion carries. It will be forwarded to council for its third read and approval as amended. Second item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Chapter 160, Section 160.02, authorized positions, personnel, classification, and pay grade. Administration Section G1, Service Department, Section 160.02, G, second G4, Street Division for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Director Bowler?
Good evening. This legislation is for asking to add one position that would report directly under the Service Director. We would call that position a Service Manager. As you know, we run a very lean group of employees around here. And just with all the projects and everything that is under the Service Department realm, we feel this is a good time to ask to try to add another person in there to oversee some of that. And I'm sure Director Dorman would appreciate that. The estimated cost for the end of the year, to get us through the end of the year for this position, once we post it and go through all of that, is about $77,000 with benefits and everything. And then again, we would be asking to this, for this to be funded in the coming year as well. There's a second position. We just are asking for a second fleet maintenance technician. We currently are, have authorized for a fleet maintenance technician and a fleet maintenance supervisor. We are not going to fill that supervisor position. We need two people turning the wrenches, not necessarily another management position out there. And that, by granting that authorization for that position, that would save us about $34,000 for the rest of the year. So a little bit of offset on the other. I'm just asking for this to be a three-read and then an emergency, just so that we could try to get these positions filled.
Okay. I like it. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From the rest of council? All right, seeing none, I move we forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Bryant. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is an ordinance to establish separate funds and accountability for One Ohio opioid funds and declaring an emergency. Is anybody going to comment? I mean, it's.
I will. This ordinance is just for the purpose of setting up a special fund through the State Auditor's website for the purpose of being able to receive funds from the One Ohio program, the opioid settlements that we've talked about before. We are still trying to get some clarification from the state about how it is exactly that we're going to be able to use these funds. One issue in particular that we want to get clarified is that we have addiction issues in the city of statewide Central Ohio that extend beyond just opioids. In fact, I would submit that probably the most significant longstanding addiction issue that we face is alcohol addiction. And so we're hoping that we can get some approval so that the funds can be used for addictions other than opioids, in addition to opioids, because that would address the overarching issue more appropriately. Plus, it would, it would allow us to be able to use these funds in a way that doesn't require us to narrow that focus on one specific issue when it just makes more sense to address it all.
All right. Are there any questions or comments about this legislation from the committee? From the rest of council? Great, I move we forward this ordinance to council for its first read. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Bryant. Any further discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and that ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first read. That concludes the business for the Finance Administration Committee, and I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have Item 12, a consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 12, 1 through 5 are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read Items 12, 1 through 5?
One, an ordinance to reappropriate funds approved by ordinance number 172-2021, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Invers Training Solutions, Inc. for a new indoor targeting system and training system and appropriating funds, therefore, and declaring an emergency. Two, an ordinance authorizing EMHNT to conduct design, engineering, and bidding services for the Police Department West Parking Lot Lighting Services, appropriating funds, therefore, and declaring an emergency. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for 2022 fireworks display, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. Four, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Daimler Group, Inc. for the sale of real property and declaring an emergency. Five, an ordinance to establish separate funds and accountability for One Ohio opioid funds and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Bryant, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Savadi? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Quick question. I'm sorry, didn't, didn't the One opioid funds get sent as a first reading, not an emergency adoption that we just did?
It was an accident. It was supposed to be emergency.
Okay. So we need to, I mean, that's how it came out of committee as a one-read, first reading.
Let me take a look here. I believe it was presented as an emergency. That was at the request of the Auditor's Office so that we could get the account set up.
That doesn't matter to me. I just, it just came out of Finance Committee. He just said the first, for the first reading. That's all I just, as long as it's okay with you, then.
That, that is correct. There was a typographical error, but it should have been a single-read emergency.
Okay.
And that's how the motion came out of the Finance Committee?
Okay. I apologize, I didn't, I didn't hear that portion of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure you. It's straight.
Chair Savadi, we can go back and, and readdress that. If you want to rescind your motion? Yes.
Why can't we just put it on right now? Why do we have to go back?
Council could choose to amend it as a council, the whole.
Okay.
And then, and then vote on it.
You still would have to rescind your motion.
No, council could just make, make a motion. There could just be, okay. What we'll do is pull number five from this. So in the vote, the motion will only be a motion for items 1 through 4. So council president?
Yes.
So we have a first by Councilmember Bryant and a second by Councilmember Savadi on items 1 through 4. So let me go ahead and call the roll?
Did you finish, you finished reading item four, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please call the roll. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Packerell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Cotner. All right, now I will read item 5, again, to be voted on singularly. Item 5. Item five, an ordinance to establish separate funds and accountability for One Ohio opioid funds and declaring an emergency.
Can we, Molly, can we get a motion to amend?
Yeah.
To add the emergency?
I can move to amend this to be, uh, one read, an emergency.
Hey, Councilmember Savadi?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Baker? We can do an all in favor for the amendment. Council President?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. Now we'll need a, an, a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
We need a motion to approve as amended.
I will move to approve the, uh, item as amended.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Bryant is...
Okay. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Packerell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cutler.
Aye.
That was a seven zero vote.
Seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Item thirteen on the agenda is consent agenda for a first reading. Items thirteen, one through five are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a first reading. Would the clerk please read items thirteen, one through five?
Number one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the city of Reynoldsburg for a property located at six three two zero East Main Street from Bryce and Main Street District, the BMD to Community District, um, Community Commercial District, CC. Two, an ordinance to approve the final plot plan for the Eastwood Development. Three, an ordinance to amend ordinance thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, adopted on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, to approve and authorize the execution and delivery of amendment number one of the Joint Economic Development District Contract Number Seven between the Etina Township and the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with modern office methods for the copiers for the police department and waive competitive bidding. Five, an ordinance to amend chapter one sixty, section one six zero point oh two, A, authorized positions, personnel, classification, and pay grade, A, administration, section G one, service department, section one six oh point oh two, G four, street division for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, declaring an emergency.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Item fourteen on the agenda is consent agenda for a second reading. Items fourteen, one through three are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading. Would the clerk please read items fourteen, one through three?
One, an ordinance appropriating funds from the unappropriated general fund to the police department for donated monies. Two, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset li- list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department. Three, an ordinance appropriating funds from the unappropriated general fund to accounts in the Community Events Department.
These ordinances stand for a second reading. Item fifteen on the agenda is consent agenda for a third reading. Items fifteen, one through seven are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval. Unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion, council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items fifteen, one through seven?
Madam President?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Can you, uh, remove item one for a separate reading, please?
Remove item one? Thank you. We will move on with items fifteen, two through seven. Would the clerk please read items fifteen, two through seven?
Two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept public infrastructure associated with Spring Hill Farms, section one. Three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with EMHNT for the engineering and management of the two thousand and twenty-two sewer line CCTV manhole inspection and cleaning project. Four, an ordinance to amend chapter thirteen oh five, permits and fees, section thirteen oh five point oh one, fee schedule of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. Five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an annual agreement with EMHNT for geographical information systems, GIS, maintenance and support for two thousand and twenty-two. Six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an annual agreement with EMHNT for web GIS upgrade enhancements, two thousand and twenty-two. And seven, an ordinance to establish section one six zero point one three, paid family leave of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances, fifteen, two through seven?
So moved.
Councilmember Bryant, may I have a second? Councilmember Baker? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Packerell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cutler.
Aye.
Madam President, that was seven zero.
These ordinances approved. Seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Would the clerk please read item fifteen, item number one?
An ordinance establishing section seven oh one point oh seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg, commonly referred to as the pay-to-stay ordinance.
May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Madam President, do you wanna offer discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we can have discussion now.
Is there any other further discussion? No discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Packerell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cutler.
Aye.
Madam President, that was six one.
There are six affirmative votes and one negative vote. Next on the agenda is other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss?
Sorry.
Councilmember Baker?
Um, I wanna mention this and thank you to, uh, School Board Member Abrams for pointing this out last time. There was a couple of, um, students at Reynoldsburg. I totally forgot to, to congratulate and give them recognition. Um, one is, first is the boys' basketball team. I know the main focus has been on the girls, but we still have to give the boys some credit because they did make a deep run into the playoffs. They just came up short, so I do wanna give kudos to them. Uh, and also the two young ladies on the Reynoldsburg wrestling, uh, girls' wrestling team, uh, please forgive me if I butchered his name, Rowan Strater and Summer Bates. Um, to give them credit for, um, for a great season that they had. Obviously, they came up short, but they still put it in their own, and they deserve recognition as well. And also, thank you to our law, uh, law enforcement, our men and women in the military, those working in logistic, um, industry, retail, um, nurses, doctors, and teachers, especially teachers, uh, for all the hard work that they're doing, they continue to do, especially during this pandemic, so still gotta give a shout-out to them.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe?
Just to piggyback on Councilman Baker, um, there's a gentleman, Logan, he was a state qualifier for the boys' wrestling. I can't remember his last name.
His last name is Smiley? My...
Thank you.
So, okay.
Said that, I apologize. I thought you missed that.
No, I gave him, uh, recognition at our last council meeting.
Do we have any other items to discuss?
Next upcoming meetings, council meeting, BZBA, and the Planning Commission meetings. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, April the eleventh, beginning at six thirty PM. As there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. The time is nine oh two. Thank you.